Meeting to order, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Offen is out tonight, so I will be your host for the evening. We have no announcements, so we can continue our litter discussion from the June 13th, 2023 meeting. Just catching us up quick, I believe this was to be an informal meeting that we were having with local liquor store owners to discuss the possibility of a local ban on nip or small serving alcohol bottles. Yes?
Yep, that's what it is.
Smee, do you want to lead?
I do. So, thank you for coming tonight. You know, I know that you, the owners have heard that, you know, we're going to ban nips and then that was not, that was a part of a discussion, but it's not really the total discussion. So, as all of you know, you all sell nips. It's a, it can be, from what I've, from what I've read, it can be anywhere from 10% to 30% of your business. And they're high profit. The issue is, is that people, people who buy the nips, well, not all of them, but a lot of them take them in, you know, when I was, when I was younger, we called them road sodas, you know? You put the can of Budweiser between your legs as you're driving down the road and that's a road soda. And that's what these things are. And it turns out that the littering in this town and other towns, and actually most towns in Massachusetts, their biggest litter are nip bottles. It's not Coke cans, it's not beer cans, it's not paper, it's nip bottles. And it's absolutely out of control. And for a couple of reasons. One is, the litter is out of control, throwing these things out the window. Obviously, they're not pulling over to the side of the road and getting out of their car and throwing it onto the side after they drink it, standing outside the car. They're whipping them out the window as they're driving down the road. So, this is, this is a real, is a real issue, but that's not our issue. That's not our problem, that's the problem of the police departments and local law enforcement. Our issue is litter. So, just today, and the, or yesterday, last night, the city of New Bedford just banned nips. So, they joined four other cities and towns that have banned, totally banned nips. Personally, I'm not in favor of that. I'm not in favor of a ban, but I am in favor of changing the bottle bill to allow nips to have a five cent deposit or something, you know, whatever, whatever it is. And I've done some research on this. So, the bottling industry and the distributors of nips and alcohol and everything are totally against this. Because it's going to cost more money to change machines and do some other stuff to whatever it is that they have to do to try to, to try to accept these bottles. The way I look at it is, if there were five cents on each one of those, people would be out there picking them up. And they're all over the place. They're in your parking lots. And I know you guys pick them up. But if you walk on the roads, and, you know, my wife and I walk a lot, and they're all over the place. It's unbelievable. So, we really wanted to hear from you guys tonight, what your thoughts are, and what your, if there are any solutions, or how we can resolve this situation. So, I will stop talking and listen.
And if I may hop in there quickly, just to reiterate that it's a discussion, and we're not assigning blame in any sort of way. It's not like we're, you know, because you sell the nips, you, you know, you're attributing to a litter issue or anything like that. We're just, you know, general discussion.
You gotta, you gotta come up to the mic.
Yeah, we'll need you to come up one at a time. Can you introduce yourself first, please?
Hi, so I'm Nayak Tharal. I am owner of Valley Plaza Discount Liquors in South Grafton. Thank you for calling us first of all, you know, to have an open discussion about the fact and see who stand where. That's where we all are here for. So, thank you. You know, it's good to meet and discuss the matter. I think that, as Mr. Mead said, we'd like to know what other people stand, like where you would stand, or, you know, Mr. Alimo, or Jeff, where you guys stand. I think we'd like to know more from your side first, I think. If you can take a moment and say what you guys stand on. We appreciate his part of it. We'd like to know what others are thinking first, I would think. So, I'll let you lead for a little bit, if you don't mind.
Mr. Chair?
Is that all right?
Yeah, sure. So, I feel similarly, similarly in that it's a collaborative dialogue. It's meant to be, to have a constructive dialogue with all of you. And I also feel similarly, because I walk a lot too. And the route that I take, it's the same one every day, and sometimes it's twice a day. And it's unbelievable how much there's a replenishment of these empty nip bottles or nip, plastic bottles. It's crazy. Would love to see something done about that. I'll pick them up, my wife will pick them up. It's just what we'll do. But I'm, I am not a fan of banning those. I think if it's part of your business and it's important to your profitability, I would not want to be the person that stands in the way of that. So, I'm open for any kind of a solution that works towards cleaning the stuff up. I think it is a littering problem. So. And for the record, I didn't drive around with a beer can in my, wow.
Mr. Chair, if I may. So, I met with you a number of years ago. I met with a couple of the other liquor store owners when I was back looking at trying to reduce plastic straws in town, not banning them, but reducing them. And also met with a couple of you regarding this issue and nips. And I knew at the time, there are other towns that had gotten rid of them. And in my discussions with a couple of owners, I think I've, I stated this when we first spoke about this, that, you know, it is part of your business, not only the 10 to 30% of your business, but additionally, people going in and buying other things, right? So, at the time, I was looking at, you know, even potentially doing a citizen's petition. And I personally backed off after speaking to you all, not everyone in this room, but I know, I'm South Grafton, then a couple of the other ones, because of the issue of, you know, trying to support local small businesses that are, for the most part, are liquor stores here in town, from what I understand, are small family-owned establishments. So, while I am a proponent of trying to reduce trash, certainly, I do the cleanup every year, and I pick up a lot of those bottles, in addition to all different sorts of sizes of bottles, if you go by the golf course. I think, again, it's a trash recycling issue that, I'm not sure that I would support, you know, a ban per se. But again, I appreciate that the decision was made by the select board to bring you all in, so we could have some sort of discussion. So, that's where I fall on it.
Yeah, I don't think you're going to hear anything, you know, terribly different from me either. You know, I think we have a general litter issue. You know, nips may be the predominant thing that people are seeing. You know, does it, does it get rid of the entire issue? No. Is it a step, or something that we could, you know, an actionable item that we could try and undertake? Yes. It's certainly not something that we would want to do if it's going to impact our local businesses, which is why I think we have you here tonight, so that we can have, like I said, that discussion. And I think hearing what the other board members are talking about, that this is probably going to be ended up directed more at our state representatives and state senators, to give them an idea as to what sort of measure we would support at the state level at this point. Because it sounds more like redemption, which would have to be a state-level issue, not town level, as opposed to a town-wide ban. I have mixed feelings on that as well. I'm not sure how much of the problem that actually solves. You know, we received a correspondence from Manish Patel of the Ultramart. I agreed with a lot of the points that were made there. You know, you don't, you don't want to drive that similar business into other towns. And now we're losing, both of us, you and, you know, the town losing those customers and that revenue, but keeping the same amount of litter, potentially. So, that's, that's kind of my stance at the current moment.
Respected all selectmen of our town, my name is Gaurang, and I'm from Five Star Liquors in North Grafton. Thank you very much, where you are standing for. I really appreciate, sir, to everyone. And we are ready, how we can, I, we know that's the problem, littering is the problem. And we are ready also to solve, how we can solve the problem. If anything needed, any fund to keep our town clean, we are ready. We talked to our supplier also, that if, they are also ready. And we can also make few hours also to pick up the, whatever we can see around our store, or maybe in our town, or maybe we can select, we can help like that way also, or any human hours like that. We are ready to help, but it will hurt. If it is gonna ban, if it is gonna ban in a whole state, that's a different story. But in a small town, we are surrounded by the big city of like Worcester. They're gonna buy from there, and also they're gonna litter in our town also. So, it's not gonna help. It's gonna kill the small business only. That's fine, but your stand is good, we appreciate. And we are happy to help, whatever you ask to do us. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Malik, and I'm from Grafton Liquors. And yeah, like I said, like, we are, we are ready to help you guys, you know? Like, we talked from Horizon, like, one of my salesmen, he said, we can offer like dumpsters, like nips beans, that we can put it outside, or like some places that they can throw there, you know, like after drinking, then all that stuff, you know? So, they, they are ready to help us, and we are also just same thing, like, we are ready to help you guys see how we can clean the Grafton, you know?
Now, you said that was a distributor?
Yeah, no, like one of the salesman, that I talked to him, like, we are having meeting and all that stuff. So, he said, okay, we, like, we will be, like, we headed in Worcester, like, they were, before they had discussed, and over like that. So, they said, like, we cleaned the Worcester, like, we cleaned some area and all that, and we picked them up, and we can put those beans, you know, like the nip beans, surrounding the, like, town, or something like that, you know? So, we can, we can talk to them and see what they can do, you know?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
One sec, just to finish that thought, sorry. Is that, is that something, just out of curiosity, that either, you know, that company the salesman represents would, would, you know, co-op with you guys? So, you know, maybe there's some branding or something on it, but that bin doesn't come at a cost to the local business?
Yes.
They actually also have, like, what is this called?
This is Keep Massachusetts Beautiful, and they help us.
There's a group which-
It's a group, and they help us, they come in our town, and there's a volunteer. They come and they keep our town clean. We also help them, we will also join them, and we'll pick up the, because, you know, we have to keep the clean ultimately to our town, how we can keep the, our town clean. That's the matter. So, that is the keep, and it's a name, executive director is Neil Rian. I call them, and they also call me. So, whenever it's happening, he gonna come here, and gonna contact you also. And we will try to keep our town clean, ultimately.
I just want to say quickly, not, just to discourage the talking from back there, only because that means that they can't hear you on TV. You're welcome to come up to the table, you know, we can have more than one person up here at one time, that's fine. But we need you at the microphone, so that-
Yes, sir, about that.
That's fine.
Question, what do these containers look like?
That we don't know yet, but he just tell me that, like, okay, we have something like that, that like, only the, like, nips bottle will be in there, or something like that, you know? I haven't seen the picture yet, but he just told me that's what, that's what I'm just saying, you know?
I wonder if that's a way to help out a little bit?
Yeah, a bit, a bit, that like, you can put the dumpsters out there, and that they can just throw the nips in there, and at least, you know, something.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Mr. Mead?
So, so, you know, that, that's a great idea to put, you know, to put a receptacle. And I'm assuming you put it on your piece of property?
Yes.
Okay. It's a great idea in theory. You're encouraging people to drink in your parking lot, okay? You can't do that. You can't put a dispenser, I mean, a wastebasket that is, that is totally, you know, for nips, because you'd have cars sitting in your parking lot, drinking the nips, putting them in the thing, and great, they're not littering, but they're sitting behind the wheel. And I would have to run that, you know, not the, the board would have to run that by the police chief before you did anything like that. It's a great, it's a great idea to say that you're gonna, that you, that you can help clean up and everything like that, but the big picture is-
That's right.
The big picture is, is to get it on the bottle bill, to get it, get a five cent deposit. So, you guys don't have to go out there and pick them up. People will go out and pick them up and make money out of it. You know, so, so, you know, that's my goal. And, you know, I hope it's the goal of the rest of the board, as Chairman said. We see our senators, we see our representatives, we talk to them, we say, look, we want this on the bottle bill. Five cities and towns have banned nips, which specifically hurt the businesses in their town. We don't want to do that. But we want somebody to get off their butt and do something, and try to resolve this situation, you know? I mean, you know, if, if, if bottles of Jack Daniels were being thrown out the window, you know, then we got another problem, okay? But the bottles of Jack Daniels are getting thrown out are only this big. So, so it's more, you know, again, I'm gonna go back, because the bottlers and the distributors are the ones who put up the money to fight against putting these in the bottle bill three years ago. So, or four years ago. So, you know, that's, that's where we want to go. I think, you know, it's, it's a great gesture that you guys have a group that want to help, that want to clean up, and you guys want to clean up. But please, don't buy those dispensers and put them in your parking lot, okay? Because that's not gonna go well, for you.
I can go next. So, like I stated before, I'm from Valley Plaza Discount Liquors. First of all, the way you all four have explained your stand on the matter, I think that it's, it's very good, first of all. It's really good that you are able to understand the commerce of the matter. But, and I have been to a lot of different town, I have, you know, like, in-town meetings in such a setting like this, doing different, different agendas. The way you guys understand, you're specifically, you're selectmen, it's really good, and I'm thankful to your level of understanding, because what I witnessed somewhere else is not good, but here you are very, like, concernedful about the commerce and your small businesses, which is, which is very good. So, thank you, first of all, in that regards, to all four of you. Now, my stand on this particular matter is that nips are a moderation. So, responsible drinking is the first point. That nips can be measured, like we go to a bar, you know, you can get a drink at a time, you cannot get two drinks at a time. So, there is a moderation in nips. Like, I've been in the industry for 15 years, and I've seen people can understand, oh, I've had two, two measures, you know, or three measures. They know, they can keep tag. So, responsible drinking favors the nip, is what I'm saying. The next point is that littering, people litter everything, all the time. But I think that keep, the, the next size up, so if you ban the nip, the next thing will be a quarter pint, which is 100 ml. What guarantees us that if we ban the nip, people won't throw away quarter pints? Jack Daniel quarter pint comes on a glass, by the way, not plastic. So, if I'm drinking Jack Daniel, I'm drinking that nip out. Now, next thing is that if I'm not gonna go outside the town and bring the plastic back here, I might buy from somebody local, and that Jack Daniel quarter pint comes with the glass, that's gonna get out of the window, maybe. I ride a motorcycle, you know, it's gonna take the wheels out, you know? So, the quarter pints are next. Almost every brand that sells 50 ml also sells quarter pint. So, that, that's what will come next, statewide, county-wise, whichever way we want to think about this. So, one thing, what I understand, Mr. Mead said, I think the five cent, I think is a good idea. It supports the commerce. And it's, 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 it's like you all said, it's a state matter, not a town matter. So, I think state need to do something about it statewide, so that nobody, so even the select boards don't look bad in front of each other, like, oh, I did this, you know, and this, this, that. So, it's not a matter of the county, or, or, or a town, or a city council matter. I think it's the state matter, and that's where I think I stand, really. And I think your stand is pretty good on it, and it's a state matter, I think. So, that we don't lose the business, the quarter pint story doesn't happen, the responsible drinking remain maintained, all that things are in one single line, at this particular stand. And that's all I got. Commerce, it's give and take, that's gonna stay where it is, you know? So, that's where it is. Thank you. I hope you like mine.
Thank you. Anybody else want an opportunity to speak?
Mr. Chair, when they're done, may I speak?
You may.
So, the legislature has two bills before, right now, looking to expand the bottle bill, right? So, there's House 3690, and there is Senate 2104. Both of those measures are supported by the MMA and the Mass Municipal Committee on Energy and the Environment, which I've been on for four years, but can't remember the full name of, name of. So, that, that group did write a letter in support to the legislature of both of those, those bills. Both bills raise the, the deposit to 10 cents, and expand the materials that are allowable. So, what they call new age materials, which would be water bottles, sports drinks, miniatures, and some other, some other various things. So, it would probably be prudent, if that's the direction that this board wants to go, to have the select board write a letter of support for both of those bills, both to Mr. Meradian and Mr. Moore, as well as Jeffrey Roy, who's the House Chair, and Michael Barrett, who's the Senate Chair. Both of those would probably be prudent steps to take. The other things that I've been thinking about lately, that you might want us to consider, is some communities use the folks that do community service, and need community service work, to do roadside collection. So, what generally happens is, one person from the courts, and say, eight to 10 people that need community service hours come out, we wind up providing a detail, so that they're safe. And that helps you remove some of that from the roadsides on a more consistent basis. Then, then the, there's a great streak of volunteerism in Grafton, but it's generally once or twice a year, and then it's a handful of people that do it on a more consistent basis. But there are, you know, we could also reach out to the courts and see if that's something that they're willing to provide. Even if that's only a couple times a month, it's still better than what we're doing now, in my opinion.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, so, next steps on that? Should we decide on somebody to draft that letter of support? Does it also make sense to try and solicit letters of support for that bill from our local business owners too, or do you think it's just from?
No, I think it, the more letters and information they receive, the better.
Sure. Sure. Can you just come up to the mic, please?
What is, what is the bottle bill, like, affect us? Would you, don't, it was little, the way you said, we didn't, I didn't understand it.
So, there, the legislature right now has two different bills in front of it. They're both collectively known as an Act to Expand the Bottle Bill. And so, what the bottle, what that act would do, if the legislature votes yes, both in the House and the Senate, is raise the deposit amount from five cents to 10 cents, as well as expand it to include other bottles that were not in the waste stream at the time the original bottle bill went.
Like only sparkling, not still, that kind of thing?
Yeah, exactly. Though, you know, expand it to things that are also plastic bottles.
Include more, more, more category, basically.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Expand that. So, that includes miniatures, water bottles, sports drinks.
When you say miniature, is that-
That's nips, yeah.
Okay.
That's what the legislature calls nips.
Okay. I never use the term-
Miniatures?
No, the nip.
Okay. So, but that's, that's what they mean. And so, in a recent study that, that was done, right now, they estimate, we're collecting about 42% of those things that are eligible for redemption. Because the reason it's only 42% is because nobody cares about a nickel anymore. It's hard to do. So, they raise, if they're talking about raising it to 10 cents, as well as expanding it, and they believe that that would result in up to a 95% collection rate. Should that be able to get through the House and the Senate?
That's good, 10 cent, yes, sure. Better than, you know, just banning the whole category, right?
Right, right.
If you, if you want, if, as long as you're decent enough to give us back, we'll get your money back, simple.
Right.
That's pretty good.
Yeah.
I think. I mean, you should ask rest of them, but I think it's pretty good.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, that's what it means, right? So, if, so, if they're like it, you can send the letter supporting it.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely.
So, question back to the group, is that something that you'd be willing to do? To, to write up letters of support for these two bills?
We can, we can get back to you.
Okay, that's, that's totally fine, yeah.
We can get back to you shortly.
Great.
And then, Mr. Chair, just a question. So, if we were gonna write a letter of support without come out of your office, or are you saying it would be one of us that would draft a letter?
Either way, if you have a preference.
Any preference?
Of course. That was, that was super surprising.
Is that something-
All I did was, all I did was point them. Yeah, no, I actually, we, we have letters that the MMA has drafted, so we'll probably just pillage most of that. They've done a nice, very nice job writing, writing the, articulating the matter, so. We can do that, and then have that before you for your August 8th meeting, should we?
Tentatively, yeah.
Sure.
Excellent. All right, well, thank you all for coming in tonight. You're welcome to hang out and stay, or you're free to go if, if you want to continue your evening.
All right, that's good. So, so how can we get back to you?
So, what we'll do is, we'll ask Amber, who I think reached out to everyone, to give you an invite to the meeting, to send you more correspondence that just asks if you want to write it. And then what we'll do is, we'll give you our draft letter that we're gonna send, so that you don't have to rewrite the whole thing.
So, like, we can just sign that letter and just give it?
Yeah, you, yeah, yeah, we can help you with that.
That's good. Yeah, so we agree, anyway. I am agree, he agree. Everybody's agree, then just go for it, yeah, you know?
Okay. We will ask Amber to send that over before August 8th.
How about you guys? Are you guys agree with the 10 cent? You're good, right?
Yeah, I'm good.
You're good too, if you're decent enough. You pay for your own trash.
I take a quarter.
And I mean, that, that, you know, even the, the, the town will get money, or whoever, there's gonna be a money, so that, that will use to clean up, I guess, you know? That's good.
Mr. Chair, if I might, I'll just add that I'll probably reach out to some of you guys, if you're willing to help out with the cleanups, because I'm pretty involved in the few that we do now, and, and maybe we can, you know, utilize you guys.
Yeah, we can.
Great.
Sure, anytime.
Okay, thanks.
We will call this one also.
I'm not getting paid, anyway. I'm mostly doing volunteer work.
Keep Massachusetts Beautiful also, and their whole team will also come to help us out here.
Yeah, great.
Awesome.
Great, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. Before we switch topics, I would throw one reminder, that the yellow trash bags are available at the DPW anytime for anybody who chooses to go out and do any roadside pickup. It's not something that you have to throw in your, pays you throw bags and cost yourself any additional funds, and then you just contact the DPW, and they will come pick them up for you.
Yeah, we have them in our office as well.
And you can get them at the town administrator's office. All right, moving on to the wine malt beverage license public hearing.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Foley?
I move the board vote to continue the public hearing regarding the wine and malt beverage license held by Grafton Flea Market to Tuesday, August 8th, 2023.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item passes, we will continue that to the August 8th meeting. Next up, we have an election worker appointment.
Mr. Chair?
Ma, Ms. Foley?
I move the board vote to appoint Doris Mativier as an electric, election worker for the town of Grafton.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Okay, uh, take a vote on the matter, um, why am I blanking on?
All those in favor?
All those in favor, thank you, Mr. Mead, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, uh, clears, unanimous, good. Um, we have three appointments to the master plan working group.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to appoint Philip Grasso, Brian Hool and JT Ross to the master planning work, master plan working group.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Mead, you wanna do that again?
Do what?
All those in favor?
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion passed. Uh, we have an appointment for the assistant town clerk position. Uh, I understand they will be in next week?
Uh, no, the assistant town clerk, I don't believe was coming in.
Okay.
The, it's, we, our policy had been department heads.
Right.
And so they're, they're like second level of department head, so.
Doesn't quite make the cut.
No, no.
Well, you can take a motion.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to affirm the appointment of Michael Jeanette to the position of assistant town clerk.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, any discussion? Uh?
No, don't look at me, man, you're in charge.
I know, I keep losing it though.
Why?
I don't know, all those in favor?
I think you're in his head.
Aye.
I'm in my, yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright.
Supposed to say opposed after that.
Well, they were not opposed.
Don't know that.
Okay, uh. Thank you.
No, he doesn't. So Michael started uh today, actually. You should, uh anybody has an opportunity, stop by and welcome him, he's a very nice, very nice guy.
I tried to get in the building today, cause that's specific.
Not yet, next, next week, don't, y- you're a select board member, you can have keys.
I did have keys, but they're in my truck down at the police station, because I had to walk up.
S- sounding less and less like my problem.
Oh, no, it's your problem.
Alright, but yes, very nice gentleman came from us, to us from the DA's office and stopped in and say hello.
Wonderful. Uh, last appointment for tonight, we have a new recreation director, who I hear will be in next week.
Correct.
Alright.
Well, not next week, the eighth.
The eighth, yes, next week.
Huh?
No, he starts on the thirteenth, so he'll be in after that.
A future date, apparently.
Who will appear at a future date?
Yes.
Okay, you can take a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to affirm the appointment of Adam Lapointe to the position of recreation director.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, no opposed, we will pass. No new business or continued business, any select board reports tonight?
Uh, Mr. Chair, the Open Space and Recreation Commission or Committee met last week, I believe. Um, basically discussed the trails committee and just getting that moving forward. I know that TA's office um is working or maybe already has posted that um committee on the, the, the town page, or it's in the works. Um, so that's great, we're moving forward with the trails committee, so if anyone out there is interested, I believe we came up with a five-member committee. With no um, no one that has to be from any other board, so it's open to any town uh members. And we're also hoping that it will encourage folks that aren't necessarily on the committee, but to be involved in that, cause it'll be, seems that there's a lot of of appetite out there for it. So folks should um, once it's posted, start reaching out to the TA office to get on that committee. And additionally, we spoke, our other major agenda item at this point is relative to open space um and land use um going forward. And what we have found out is that planning board, in conjunction with CMR PC, um, is also going to be looking at that. And we can tap into their resources, uh so we've looked at maps and have an understanding, um, thanks to Dave um Robbins. Uh, with compiling these maps and information for us and in cur- on current open space and and for the most part, how it's utilized. Um, but then we're trying to have a vision going forward of looking at our, you know, potential open space and what we might want to preserve and and might not want to. So we're gonna be meeting next month um with planning and CMR PC, potentially late, later in August, uh to kind of start tapping into them to help us with this. So that's actually quite exciting for this small group that we've had going, and that's all, any questions?
Sounds great.
Alright, thanks.
Um, we had an EDC meeting last night, uh, there was a discussion item of Tufts University and their science park and what they're planning on doing with it. And um, I will be bringing that up at an, at a, what they're going to be doing with it in the future meeting. Does not involve the town of Grafton, so I'll be bringing that up, and that's, we had a great meeting last night, so that's that.
Great.
Congratulations, Mr. Chair. It's a break. I say congratulations, you're the new chair, yes?
I am?
Yeah.
Oh, the chair of EDC?
Correct.
Oh, yeah. Oh, no, I wasn't even thinking of that.
Congratulations, Mr. Chair.
Going, how did I go from here to there? Cause I like my seat.
Okay, um, we can jump into the TA report.
Okay, just a brief one tonight. So uh, construction, not a lot has changed here, the only thing that I wanted to bring to everyone's attention is that um, our main street project in South Main Street. The top coat is looking like it's going to be mid-August, uh which is the final layer of asphalt. So anyone that has concerns, um, you know, with the layout, something that they don't like the look of, anything like that, that they've been thinking about. Now is the time, because after mid-August, no one's gonna have much appetite to fix. Anything, because the road is now freshly coated with top coat. Um, so we definitely wanna, wanna get any of those things um in front of us. And everything else remains status quo from last week. Uh, municipal pit, center pit parking lot continues to go well, we did uh a whole bunch of the curbing today, as well as add some new drainage structures. Um, it does seem to be uh sheet flowing very well towards those structures, so that's good. And we've added a bunch of curbing all the way around, which is, I think, going to be helpful. So, uh, we are on track for uh project completion on Friday, uh with a full open uh again on Monday, so. Um, we're on, we're on top track and it does look, looks very nice.
Are they, they backing up the curbs or are we?
Um, we are, I think, I believe we're doing that in-house, so. And that's, that's pretty much it.
Yeah, looks amazing, nice smooth walk in after a smooth drive up.
Yeah.
It was great.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be nice, um, and I think the, the curbing transition's gonna help us a lot too, with just people running over the, the lawn. Just quite frequent.
And you don't have to worry about backing down into the valley, uh, on the backside of lawn.
That's true, that's true, yeah.
When I, when I drove up, when I drove up today, came up Brigham Hill, I mean, oh, so that's how you get up there, you drive right across the grass.
Right across the grass, yep. We had a number of people do it today.
And you get halfway up and it's high.
To get around the paving truck. Yeah. So, um, it's been, it's been an interesting week and a half and we're, we're looking forward to being back to open like normal.
Alright, um, anybody have any correspondence they wish to discuss? Only a couple, uh, we have one resignation tonight.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to acknowledge and accept the resignation of Madeline Goodrich from the position of treasure collector effective August the fourth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
Mr. Chair, before we move on, can I just say a quick thing about Madeline?
Please do.
Great, um, so, you know, Madeline's been with us for uh, like a year and a half, I think, almost, almost two years. Um, and she's moving on to a, a different municipality in the same capacity. Um, I did just wanna talk about a couple of things that she did while she's here, cause I think they're pretty big accomplishments for Grafton. Um, so she implemented an application called Debt Book. Um, so when I started, all of our debt was commingled, so you couldn't tell what fell off when and how it was arranged. So she went through methodically and pulled all of those things apart and then implemented this software that now has a, a full tracking of all town debt. Um, what the, what the rates are, what the schedule is, all, all of that, so now, um, that's helpful for a number of things, but, but also realistically for us to be able to accurately track. Where the taxpayers' money is, is going. Um, so that was really huge. Um, she also was able to redeem eighteen properties, which means there were eighteen properties that were behind on their taxes that she was able to work with, um, to get back onto the tax rolls. Um, we also had successful uh land court judgments on twelve properties and held an auction on one. We needed to recoup seventy thousand dollars to cover our uh expenditures on that taking and we netted two hundred and fifty thousand. So that was pretty, uh, a pretty good win. Um, and then just a whole bunch of other stuff that's only probably interesting to, to me, but is our, our big deals. Um, the, 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 one thing that I, she, she accomplished that I think uh we will be most grateful for is, she created a procedure manual. For the treasure collectors' office, which encompasses all the positions as well as continuity of operation plan. Um, so when she exits, the next person can come in and know exactly how that office has been operating. Which was lacking before and made things very difficult whenever we had a person transition. So, um, just wanna thank her for all her work and wish her good luck. And we have posted the position and we will start interviewing in the next probably week or so.
Always difficult when we lose somebody, but definitely thank you, Ms. Goodrich, for um, really revolutionizing some of the, some of the treasure collector.
Yeah.
Foundation and structure. Okay, um, public comment? None in the audience, any on Zoom?
Nope, motion adjourned.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we are adjourned, thank you.